... Bruce. Audeman Fisk.
Here.
Audeman Braithwith.
Here.
Audeman Nguyen.
Here.
Audeman Wilson.
Here.
Audeman Holmes.
Here.
Audeman Tendem.
Here.
Audeman Grover.
Here.
Audeman Rainey.
Here.
Nine to zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, May 16th, 2011 meeting of the Evanston City Council. First on the agenda is Mayor's Proclamations and Public Announcements. And first is the National Public Works Week proclamation. Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services provided have far-reaching effects on our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, highways, fleet maintenance, public buildings, solid waste, and recycling collection, and whereas the health, safety, and quality of life of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas quality infrastructure, services, and facilities, as well as their planning, design, construction, and maintenance, could not be provided without the dedicated efforts and skills of public works employees, and whereas the motivation for efficiency of qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works and related departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform, and whereas it is in the interest of the public for citizens and civic leaders to understand the role that public work services plays in protecting the environment, improving the public health and safety, contributing to economic vitality, and enhancing the quality of life in Evanston. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth Tisdall, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim May 15th through 21st as National Public Works Week and commend all city employees for delivering quality public service. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of public works employees in providing responsive and effective government for Evanston. Is Suzette Robinson here?
There she is.
Thank you very much. And please thank everyone for us.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next is National Preservation Month, May 2011. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people, and whereas celebrating America's treasures is the theme for National Preservation Month 2011, co-sponsored by Evanston Preservation Commission and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth Tisdall, Mayor of the City of Evanston, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May 2011 as National Preservation Month and call upon the people of Evanston to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. And I would like to present this to Carlos Ruiz. Thank you. Carlos, for everything you do.
Thank you.
All right. Do we do design awards now? Carlos. Carlos?
Good evening, Mayor Tisdall, members of the City Council, award recipients and guests, Evanston city, Evanston citizens and city staff. My name is Gary Shoemaker, and I'm the current Chair of the Preservation Commission. I want to welcome you all to the 2011 Evanston Preservation and Design Awards Program. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the jurors for this year's program: Nicole Egan-Ducar, Leonard Karofsky, who's here in attendance, on the backside over there, and Roderick S. Nguyen of Glencoe. All three are professional architects who have generously volunteered their time this past Saturday to visit, along with our city staff, each of the 18 nominations we received for awards this year. The jury has selected 12 projects this year to receive, to receive an award this evening. In addition, the jury has decided to recognize two of the nominees with the highest distinction the commission awards, the Marjorie Perkins Award in the categories of restoration and also in new construction. Excuse me. I would also like to acknowledge, as Mayor Tisdall just did, that the month of May is Preservation Month, and that this year's theme is celebrating America's treasures. Excuse me. Tonight, we'd like to honor our own community by celebrating Evanston's treasures. Before we begin, I want to recognize as well our current preservation commissioners and thank them for providing great service to the community, and also to our, to our citizens who have submitted such great projects over the last year for us to consider. Our Vice Chair, John Willerson, our Secretary, Chris Hartzell, Suzanne Ferrand, Diane Keegan, Andres Lombano, who's standing over here, Anne McGuire, who's also in attendance this evening, John Poehl, Amy Riceboro, who I saw is over here as well, Scott Utter, and Jack Weiss, who I've also seen this evening. So I think the commission is also well-represented this evening. Thank you. And to our associate members, Mary Bugliera, who's sitting here, Anne Earl, and Emily Guthrie, and of course, Mary McWilliams, who I haven't seen this evening, but I think might be here. And a special thank you again, as Mayor Tisdall did, to Carlos Ruiz, who has done an outstanding job helping guide this commission through the past year and many other things that he's done to help the community get these projects, both through the commission and built into reality. So, thank you very much, Carlos. We appreciate your time and your efforts. Carlos has generously given me some notes to go by, so forgive me for reading a little more than speaking, but in order to keep things going smoothly, what we're going to do is offer a brief introduction to these projects, a description, an idea of what category this award has been given, and then as I call the name to identify the owners and representatives, the architects and contractors involved, please make your way forward to receive your award from the mayor and from the associate commissioners and Andres here at the front. After you receive your award, you can certainly return to your seats and enjoy the rest of the program. Excuse me. Historic preservation is not, is not living in the past, rather is planning and taking actions for the future. Historic preservation in the 21st century is not about keeping old buildings frozen in time, rather it's about managing and documenting changes affecting historic buildings and historic districts for the benefit of current and future generations. Some would say old is the new green, and historic preservation is about renewable resources such as the restoration of historic fabric and materials. Preservation is also about sustainability, and it can be said that there's no greener building than an existing building. Excuse me. It is also in times like this that, that we must recognize losses in our, losses that are important to our community and to our environment, historic and architectural resources that cannot be replaced. One such loss is a landmark structure located at 1560 Oak Avenue that was lost just a month and a half or so ago due to a catastrophic fire. This event should serve as a reminder to us all in this community that we have unique responsibility as stewards of historic buildings and historic fabrics in the community, and should welcome these responsibilities because it's the right thing to do, both for the benefit of Evanston, but also the benefit of our future community. But tonight, we're going to celebrate the people who have contributed to the, to the current and ongoing growth of our communities and to enhance Evanston's historic character. And now I have the honor of calling our first award recipient. This award is given for proper rehabilitation and alteration of a structure, and this honor goes to the Lorraine H. Morton Civic Center, which is listed as, on the National Register of Historic Places at 2100 Ridge. The project was a roof replacement, cornice restoration, and the replacement of balustrades, copper gutters, repointing, and mortar, and mortar work on the exterior. The jury saw that this is, that this is a positive and good investment in the city and the community, that it received a high caliber of renovation and restoration in terms of craftsmanship and execution, and recognized that the city is clearly looking forward toward the future, and also is continuing a high level of stewardship with regard to this building. The owner obviously is the City of Evanston. In receiving this award is Doug Gaynor, on behalf of the Director of Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation and Community Services, Paul D'Agostino, the Superintendent of Parks and Forestry, and Stephanie Levine, the Assistant Superintendent of Parks, Forestry, and Facilities Management, and the architects, Anne McGuire, Isamu Kimuru, I apologize if I just unfortunately pronounced that name, of McGuire, Gilleski, and Associates Architects. The contractors, general contractor is Rich Bartucci of G.A. Johnson, Dominique Mariano of Waikiki Roofing, and Jerry Carminelli, Carmadelli, my apologies, of Excellence and Quality Sheet Metal.
And the whole council, so please stand up. Congratulations.
All right. Our next award this evening is for adaptive reuse, and this award goes to the, to 1601-1607-1611 Simpson Street, which is also an Evanston landmark. This project was a rehabilitation and adaptive reuse of three adjacent buildings along Simpson Street. The jury commented that this particular project added, added a vitality to the neighborhood, creating a use, a, an interesting use of materials and incorporation of artistic works, and also noted the success of the internal courtyards, interior courtyards that were created. The owner is John Line Weber and Mary McCauley. The architect is Kiril Mrenchev of Studio VIM, hope that was also correct, and the contractor was Evanston Renaissance Realty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next award this evening is an award given to a project for a sensitive addition, and this project goes to, this award goes to 2305 Hartree Avenue. This is a two-story addition at the rear of a main house. The jury commented that the addition in this deck have a simple and clean massing appropriate to the scale and style of the home, that the internal spaces created are nicely scaled and naturally lit, that the new architecture was nicely proportioned and blended with the original. The owners are Tom and Ellen Cushing. The architect is Nathan Kipnis of Nathan Kipnis Architects, and the contractor is Bruce Hildner with Jonathan McKnight of McKnight Partners. The next award is also for a sensitive addition, and this award goes to 2448 Lincolnwood Drive, an Evanston landmark. This project is a second-story addition constructed over an existing attached garage. The jury commented that the massing materials were thoughtful and that it appeared to be a creative solution to adding a good amount of square footage without obliterating the original roof line. The owners of this project are Mark Tendem and Neil Moglen. The architect is Brian Goel of Rugo Raff Architects, and the contractor was Donowitz Construction. Our next project, our next award is for adaptive reuse of a structure, and this is located 11, at 1128 Florence Avenue. This was an interior and storefront rehabilitation, including loft apartments at the rear of the, rear of the property, and the jury commented again that this is a special neighborhood with an eclectic urban quality. The project adds another layer of artistic quality to the neighborhood with appropriate massing and public street presence and a wonderful private garden. The owners are John Line Weber and Mary McCauley. The architect was Kiril Mrenchev of Studio VIM, and again, this project was by Evanston Renaissance Realty. Our next award is for a sensitive addition, and this award goes to 1334 Henman Avenue. This is an interior rehabilitation and redesign of an existing rear facade and back porch. The jury commented that the, that the simple, clean massing resulted in elegant addition and massing change to this existing historic home. The owners are Russell Lane and Nina Donnelly, and the architect is Stuart Cohen and Julie Hacker of Stuart Cohen and Julie Hacker Architects. The contractor is Steve Sturm of Sturm Builders. Our next award is for the proper rehabilitation and restoration of a project. This award is given to 1143 Forest Avenue, also an Evanston landmark. This project is the comprehensive restoration of an exterior facade, including storm windows, front porch stairs, balustrade, hand-cut shingles, and the matching of existing elements in the house. The jury comments were that the neutral colors and geometry of this beautiful house were accentuated, that the work had obviously been undertaken with thoughtful and detail-oriented care, and as much of the original materials and, and craftsmanship were maintained as, as in accordance with the Secretary of the Interior standards and intent. The owner is Michael Lowe. The consultant was Neil Vogel, Historic, and the contractor was Mark Chopecki of Mark Wizard Construction. This is an Evanston landmark as well. This is for the restoration of the building's original wood windows, as well as repair, excuse me, repair and replacement of the building's existing enclosed porch. I think Carlos is going to show you some images of the conditions between the original and the existing that should show up pretty, a pretty noticeable change and, and large investment in this project. The jury comments noted that this is a very respectful restoration, including the slate roof, the windows, and the porches, that they look forward to, they look forward to seeing continued stewardship at this level of this particular building, as do we all, I think, and that the new windows and handrail on the enclosed porch are an excellent and appropriate improvement in this, in the other windows integrated properly. The owner of this project is the Evanston, is the, I'm sorry, the Women's Club of Evanston, Carol Short is the facilities manager there. The architect is Anne McGuire and Danielle Uer of McGuire, Gilleski, and Associates, and the contractors are Paul Burkett, History Construction for the windows, and Bruce Hildner and Jonathan McKnight of McKnight Partners. Our next award is for a sensitive addition, and this is awarded to 721 University Place, also an Evanston landmark. This is a three-story addition to the north, to the north end of an existing structure utilizing the existing architectural vocabulary and building materials. The jury noted that the, the new entrance is far more comfortable, approachable, inviting to the public, that the window massing and dormers are consistent, that the eve detailing was duplicated very well, and that the portions of the, of the structure were respected. The owners of this property are Northwestern University, represented by Andrew McGonigal, with Keith Dronan, the Director of NU Scholarship, Scholarship House, I think that's correct. My apologies. The architect is Homan Wong of Panto Lima, and the, the contractor is Philip Robertson of Bullion Andrews. This award goes to 2205 Sherman Avenue in the northeastern Evanston Historic District. This project is for a one-and-a-half-story addition in the rear of the main house. The jury noted a wonderful connection between the house and the terracing down into the yard, that, and also noted that the detailing on the addition, on the addition has taken, has taken wonderful cues from the original home and marries the addition nicely to the house. The owners are Charles Plum and Mary Kay Conlin. The designer is Cynthia Jo Berry of CBJ Associates, and Bonnie Ford of Bonnie Ford and Associates for the Hardscape and Landscape Architecture, and the contractor is Bill Hurt of WL Hurt Construction. The next two projects are going to be recognized by the jurors for achieving excellence and therefore have been selected to receive the Marjorie B. Perkins Award. The first award goes to, for restoration of a project goes to 1881 Sheridan Road, the Harris Hall renovation, which is an Evanston landmark. This project is a comprehensive interior renovation and restoration of interior historic spaces and exterior restoration, including a new garden level in limestone paved with bluestone, also including the replacement of the main entrance stairs on the west side of the building, restoration of windows and frames, and the installation of new windows and sashes with exterior profiles replicating the originals. The jury noted this project is to be celebrated for both its preservation and original design and the quality of it, and the quality of design in the expansion. It's an extraordinary example of how, how to appropriately update and recognize historic structure in a sensitive manner. Again, the owner is Northwestern University, represented by John Brzezinski. The architect is Dan Weiss of Weiss Langley Weiss, and the contractor is Don McDougall and Anthony Douglas of Turner Construction. And for our last award of the season, the Marjorie Perkins Award for New Construction is awarded to 1461 through 1467 Ashland Avenue. This project is the new construction of seven work-lived townhomes with integral storefront retail space on the ground floor. The jury noted that this was a thoughtful and creative site planning project that created a, that created a transition between two distinctly different neighborhoods. The buildings are modern but maintain historic character in their breaking, in their breakdown and integration of materials. They also note that this is a, this is a nice juxtaposition of interior and exterior space and public and private spaces. The owners are Tom Engel and John Cunningham. The architect is, architects are Ellen Gallant and Marion Tweedy of Rockwell Associates Architects, Architecture and Planning, apologies, and the contractor is Tom Engel. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great job.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to ask Dave Stonebeck, our Director of Utilities, to come up and talk about a recent report we received from the state of Illinois regarding our water quality testing laboratory. And Mr. Stonebeck, maybe you can just wait for just a moment while the award recipients assess.
Madam Mayor and City Council, I have with me tonight our certification for the water quality laboratory at the Evanston Water Treatment Facility. We're certified to continue using the laboratory for the next two years. The remarkable thing about this is that our laboratory is audited every two years by the Illinois Department of Public Health. The audit consists of onsite evaluation and procedures, records, and equipment. Over 200 different criteria are met in order to get the perfect compliance with zero deviations. And we're pleased and proud to report that once again, the laboratory did this with zero deviations. This is the third audit in a row, representing six years in which we've had zero deviations. To quote the- To quote the auditor from the Illinois Department of Public Health, "Once again, Eleanor Mead and Al Diaz-Mazaretto are to be commended on their dedication to excellence, as was made evident by their quality control procedures, record maintenance, and technical skills. The effort to generate quality data from this lab is apparent. Congratulations on receiving zero deviations for third consecutive evaluation." And I would like to introduce Eleanor Mead, our chemist, and Al Diaz-Mazaretto, our microbiologist.
Mr. Stonebeck?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stonebeck, two questions.
Sure.
How unusual is it to get zero deviations one year versus three consecutive times?
Several labs, several labs get it one year, one time in a row. But when we received it two times in a row, we were second in the state to get it, the only other community to get it two times in a row. And to my knowledge, we're the only laboratory to get three times in a row.
In the whole state of Illinois?
In the state of Illinois.
My second question, as the council is aware, there was a fire early yesterday morning at the water plant that was in conjunction with the power outage that hit about 1,500 customers in northeast Evanston. Dave, could you talk a little bit about what happened and the work that's being done to repair what was damaged?
Yes, at approximately 3:15 yesterday morning, the two feeders that supply electricity to the water treatment plant, both went out concurrently at the same time, and we don't know which caused which. We had an explosion and a fire at the water treatment plant in our switchgear. Our switchgear is similar to the circuit breaker in your home. You have 120 volts coming into your home into the circuit breaker. We have 4,160 volts coming into ours. So it's a lot bigger equipment. And there was a fire that damaged at least two of the 15 cubicles in our switchgear. The others are out of service right now and will need to be cleaned and restored prior to be placing back in operation. After the fire, which was extremely high heat, it melted the asphalt that's underneath the roofing membrane. So the roofing membrane needs to be replaced as well as it's damaged. And there's work, water leaking in, you can't have that over an electrical switchgear. We have had the factory mutual insurance auditor out meeting with us today. Everything will be covered by insurance. We've had a structural engineer out to make sure that the roof panels are safe. They are. We've had the roof route, he's preparing a proposal for the replacement of the roof. We've had a contractor out that specializes in restoration of switchgear. And we've had a engineering firm out that would help us prepare a specification of plans for the replacement of the switchgear that needs to be replaced. So we're, we're moving along and getting this restored. We're currently operating the plant using our natural gas engines. When this event occurred, our operators acted appropriately, started up natural gas engines to maintain pressure in the city, hit the quick close switch on the line going to Northwest Water Commission to prevent main breaks that might have resulted from that, and then dialed 911. And so all the correct procedures were followed, and we're on a good measure towards proper restoration of the facility.
And Dave, I want to thank publicly the members of your staff who responded so quickly, not only the operator who was on duty at the time, but you were able to mobilize a good number of staff very early in the, yesterday morning, which assured that the residents of Evanston had their water service uninterrupted, the residents of Skokie had their water service uninterrupted, and that we were able to fix what needed to be adjusted so that the residents in Arlington Heights, Wheeling, Buffalo Grove, and Palatine, their water was, strictly speaking, interrupted for a few hours. But fortunately, there was enough in the reservoir of the commission in Des Plaines for the, what was it, about two hours, two and a half hours?
Correct.
Until we were able to safely and appropriately reconnect back to the Northwest Water Commission service. So thank you and thanks to your staff for their outstanding work early yesterday morning.
I'm very proud of the staff. They have a dedication and a responsibility, and it showed through in true colors on Sunday when they all report to work at 6 o'clock in the morning on an emergency basis and work 12 hours. Our SCADA equipment, the electrical shock went through the SCADA equipment, and finding the shorts was like finding a needle in the haystack, and basically every wire more or less had to be pulled off, checked, and then reconnected. So they, they worked on that for about 12 hour straits and got us back up in working operation. So we're running safely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Next is Citizen Comment. We have four speakers tonight, Muffy McCauley, Mike Fasilco, Junaid Rizki, and Kevin O'Connor.
Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I wanted to just say a word about the consideration of the salt domes and the salt barns that you are going to be talking about later this evening. I understand that one of the proposed locations is at Ashland and Noys Street, which many of you know is the gateway to the Hill Arts District. And we have worked really hard with the sculpture garden and other softening decorative initiatives to bring an artistic sensibility to that area. It is the start of the bicycle path in Evanston. And we think that not just aesthetically, it would be adverse to so much that we've been trying to accomplish there. But in addition to that, we've always had a problem with an abundance of automobile traffic, not only related to the various auto industries that are in the neighborhood already, but in addition to that, the children who walk home from Haven Middle School cross right in front of that pathway. So, you know, between all of the cars that are already there, the thought that salt trucks would be going in and out of that neighborhood with, you know, great regularity would add another component of automotive overkill, if you will, to the neighborhood. So I'm sure that, that all of these things will be, will be taken into account as you consider this. But in that area in particular, we've, we've made so many gains to enhance the arts district tagging of it, and we really believe that a salt barn or dome at that location would take us back several steps. So we'll hope that you will consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Fasilco, 2728 Reese Avenue. I saw the list, the Evanston Engage list attached to the meeting packet tonight, and I guess I hope that the list is not going to be considered an official referendum from which priorities will be set. Clearly, there are suggestions posted near the end of the open website period have the fewest comments. The suggestions made have no corresponding value dollars, values of dollars saved, or in some cases, additional budget dollars that will be spent, creating a bigger budget deficit. Based upon the city's response to a March 2011 FOIA request, the total city debt as of February 2010 was $250 million, and the estimated underfunded pension amount as of March 2010 was $203 million, making the total debt problem over $450 million as of March 2010. A year later, I don't know how much worse or better the problem is. My point is that if the Engage Evanston list is going to be used as a, as a referendum or to solve the Evanston's debt problem, it seems out of, out of proportion with the votaries that are showing for some items that may be costing us more money than, than not. Suggestions of new programs or nice to haves, you know, should not be considered that heavily, in my opinion. The city should focus on the suggestions that will result in debt reduction immediately or items that will result in a positive impact on the city budget in the short term or in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you.
Junaid Rizki. At a recent budget hearing, I outlined at least $2 million in what I considered unnecessary spending and things that should be cut. I sat down and, because after I sat down, the next speaker, a young black man walked up to me and shook my hand, and then he proceeded to ask the city to create jobs. What is interesting to me, less than a week earlier or so, the mayor denied a license to a business that would have created 150 jobs. Tonight, I asked the council to discuss the possibility of overriding the mayor's decision. Requirements could be added to, for approval to interview and hire some percentage of Evanston residents. Economic development in this, in this town is becoming a major issue. Several meetings ago, less, two applicants at PND actually came up to me and asked me about procedures at the meeting because they didn't know what was going on. It makes me wonder how our planning staff is working here. But I'm going to move on to another topic, and that's one of my, my issues, is the capital planning here, or the city's lack of. The topic is probably isn't quite as simple as a liquor license and jobs. It's very clear to me the city is not managing its capital and not in control, in control of the spending. Shutting down the capital in 2009 was very interesting. Recently, you approved a SCADA system, which in and of itself seems to have some issues. But I found that more interesting is how that SCADA system fit into a multi-year capital plan that nobody asked questions about. And in my real issue, can staff produce a capital, really a capital plan, not one that goes into geo-bonds and financing, but really shows three simple things? The capital approved, the capital committed, and the capital spent in each year. Where's that document and where was the city show it? Can the city show it? The recent idea of funding capital out of operation, the operational budget appears fiscally irresponsible to me unless the items are true maintenance. Frankly, approving a salt dome project on staff's recommendations of fluctuation in salt prices appears rather silly. Isn't this the same group that basically did not correct the correct price for yardway stickers? In closing, there appears to be a lot of discussions on the local boards and things about crime in this town. Frankly, if this council cannot control the operations of the city in a logical or intelligent manner, how are you going to control the chaos in this, on the streets? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Kevin O'Connor, 1227 and a half, Isabella. Couple of quick remarks before I begin. Unlike Ms. McCauley, who has had very successful real estate management and ownership and development in Evanston, I would just have one common sense thing for what I saw in the salt dome, and that's at the north end of Ryan Field, which the city has been re-landscaping since Northwestern was so generous to let us melt snow up there during our blizzard of the past miserable winter. It's hard for me to fathom why we would want to spend that much money going from the northernmost point to bring our salt to the rest of the city. And I do believe common sense would, would suggest that a more central location would be more advantageous. I would also like to say, if any of the well-deserved preceding awards involve tax dollars or tax breaks, I would be happy to accept for all Evanston taxpayers. Now, for my remarks, Evanston is bankrupt. Cook County is bankrupt. Illinois is bankrupt. Our country is bankrupt. Boy, misery sure loves company. What have we done to solve this problem? Raised taxes, raised fees, ah, the power of the purse. A reasonable person would obviously ask, well, how did we get here? Sometimes, though, there is no answer because the question is never asked or answered by our elected officials. One good example culminated today in Chicago of this, when Mayor Emanuel praised former Mayor Daley for his 22 years as mayor. However, never once has Mayor Emanuel condemned how Chicago got to the point of a half billion dollar budget deficit. Did this magically happen? More importantly, why do we allow our elected officials to not face consequences and responsibility for what has happened on their elected watch? Naturally, I bring up this analogy because it applies also, unfortunately, to Evanston. What has been our response to our municipal bankruptcy? Continued giveaways to private businesses to either come to Evanston or stay through EDF, Economic Development Funds, TIFs, sales tax rebates, property tax rebates, et cetera? Given the news about Sears, Motorola Mobility, and Navistar recently, they all used the threat of leaving to gain lower property taxes, income tax relief, and sales tax relief for themselves. It has now encouraged public comment about whether individual citizens and businesses that do not come hat in hand with threats to leave should also get these generous breaks, since they are the ones who have to pay for the giveaways.
Mr. O'Connor, could you wrap it up, please?
Yes, I will. Finally, we are well past the tipping point on all levels in Evanston, and the time window is short for all responsible to be held accountable. We know that radical solutions are necessary if we are to truly solve our bankruptcy. However, most suggested solutions do not seem strong enough. We all know the cautionary tale of Nero fiddling while roamed burned. Caveat empty. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. City Manager, we have a special order of business, the salt dome.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have three items for you this evening. We'll start with a presentation and discussion of issues regarding the salt dome. Suzette Robinson, our Public Works Director is here with a presentation. While she comes up, just to remind members of the public that this is an issue that the council spent a fair amount of time discussing in late 2008, and my understanding is it was probably the first or second meeting of the 78th Council in 2009. Since then, we have put the project a little bit on the back burner as we've tried to deal with some other information. And Suzette, I bet you Brandon can help pass that out so you can get ready to, to get started. So we're here this evening to restart a conversation that has been dormant for about two years because the issues with our current salt dome continue to deteriorate. We are not here with a recommendation. We are not here with a specific course of action to recommend to the council this evening. However, we do believe that it's important to restart a conversation that has lain dormant for the last two years. So Ms. Robinson's presentation this evening will kind of give an overview of information that has been previously provided to the city council. She's done a refresh on available locations that we see as reasonable. We would hope that the council would receive this presentation, provide us some feedback on all aspects of the project, the location, sizing, cost, you know, other options that we have. And I'm sure that Ms. Robinson will, will talk a little bit about the discussions with other communities as well as funding that has been received from Northwestern University that came from those discussions in late 2008 and early 2009. So with that, unless there are any initial questions, Ms. Robinson, good evening.
Alderman Rainey.
Before we start, could, could you just refresh our memory? We, we purchase and store salt for entities other than the city, do we not?
That's correct.
Okay. Could you run down that list?
We also purchase and store salt for Northwestern District 65 and District 202. To the tune of about 1,000 tons a year is what they use between the three of them.
But we do, we do that?
Yes.
And do they come and pick it up, or do we deliver it to them?
No, they come pick it up. So we actually...
Out of our dome?
Right, we load their trucks. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Clerk Green, Alderman and City Manager. I'm Suzette Robinson, the Director of Public Works, and I'm going to talk to you about the salt dome location report. Our existing salt dome, as Wally mentioned, is over 20 years old, and it is quite dilapidated. About eight years ago, it was recommended that the salt dome be replaced or have some major repairs made. major repairs made. Well, at the time, we only had enough, well, only enough money was allotted to do some minor repairs. Those repairs were made, and then we found ourselves back in the same deteriorated condition. And what that deterioration consists of is there are holes. It basically rains into the salt dome. There are some structural integrity issues and cracking in the, because it's a concrete dome in and of itself. So, we're very concerned about the structural integrity. The other reason that we're looking at a replacement as well is the storage capacity is lacking. And that was evident. We had two particular situations that occurred that brought this to light. One occurred about the same timeframe, about eight years ago, where we had a salt shortage in the Midwest, and it was a result of a, you know, freezing temperatures. The salt comes up through the Mississippi on barges, and they couldn't get through. So, we were, and at the time, I was in Indianapolis, and I mean, it was felt there, too, that salt supply was in, it was in very high demand, and we just really couldn't get it. And so, you know, there was some capability of us to actually go to the plant, but they were not trucks. And then they were bringing things in by rail, and it was just taking a long time. And fortunately, the winter that year was not as challenging. So, we made it through. But that also raised the issue of, we really needed to have a more robust capacity. And some surrounding communities responded to that. Dust Plains, for example, on the hills of that built a new salt dome, a larger-capacity salt dome, which I believe is 4,000 tons as well. And then, more recently, about three years ago, we had the same scenario occur again where, in this case, the salt shortage was a result of really just a substantial number of incidents in terms of snow and ice, that we had so many issues in the Midwest that we didn't, there was not enough salt stockpiles to support all the communities. And this resulted in a substantial increase in the price of salt that year. We started out paying about $50 a ton, and I think towards the end, we were at $161 a ton was the highest that we paid. But there were other communities that were paying $200 a ton at the height of the issues. So, that's another reason that we identified in terms of why we need a replacement salt dome. The other thing that we looked at is the capabilities that the salt dome that we have. We also are using, while we're looking at additional storage capacity, we're also looking at technological improvements. We're kind of behind the times in terms of liquid deicing capabilities and chemical mixing that some of the other communities use to actually, which would result in less salt usage, but also allow us to do more anti-icing to get out in front of a storm as opposed to always being on the reactive end. So, we really tried to take all of that into consideration in the new proposal. And as the city manager alluded to, we had a conversation with Northwestern back in 2008 and asked for them to participate in the funding of the dome, and they agreed and provided the city with, I believe, $78,000 towards the purchase of the new dome. So, this is our existing salt dome location. It sits just behind the service center, the municipal service center across the street, 2020 Asbury. And it's a very tight location, and, you know, very difficult to maneuver around, and we just really have no means of expanding in that existing site. We have looked at it in a variety of different ways and shapes to try to make the 4,000-ton capacity facility fit without any success. So, that led us to looking at some additional locations. So, briefly, I want to go through some of the requirements, and the budget requirement changed a little bit, and we'll talk about that more. But we want to store approximately 4,000 tons. We based our locations and our footprint on the Gambro-style facility. When we did the presentation a couple of years ago, the Gambro-style, which looks more like a barn versus a dome, that seemed to be, have a little more appeal than the typical teepee, but we're going to ask you to kind of, to decide which style you would prefer. And then, of course, it has to comply with land use and zoning. We felt that it was important that the salt dome be adjacent to a primary route, and that is just to allow the trucks' ease to get to the rest of the city from wherever they are. And then, that it be centrally located so that we could, once again, be able to access the city north and south with relative ease. And drainage needs to be adequate. We wanted to, we would like to complete the salt dome prior to the winter of 2012, and the amenities, indoor and/or covered storage. And we're really looking for that amenity with the understanding that the recycling center in the future would not be available for storage. And then, the salt brine production capability and overhead liquid deicing capability, those are the two things that I talked about before in terms of technology. Right now, we actually purchase on an exchange program, salt brine from Winnetka. So, we kind of do a trade for, they provide salt brine that we need, and they use some of our equipment in exchange for that. And we think there are some possibilities going forward with some partnerships as it relates to the selling of brine and some of the other liquid deicing production that we're proposing. We did have some conversations with some surrounding communities. Skokie recently rebuilt their salt dome, so they're not interested in the salt dome, but they may be interested in the brine production. So, there may be some partnership opportunities there with them, as well as Morton Grove also purchased this salt brine. They have a contractor or a supplier that brings it in, so there's the possibility with them as well. And those are really the only larger users of salt in terms of our more immediate neighbors, with the exception of Chicago, of course. And going back to the salt dome styles, these are the two styles. The traditional dome type is on the left, and then the Gambro-style is the design on the right. So, and that is the design that we recommended, and our cost estimates were based on constructing that design. And that type of design, because of the additional facade on the outside of the building to make it look more presentable, comes at a cost.
Alderman Winn has a question.
Yes, Suzette, I didn't see this in the materials. Can you tell us the height of the two different types of structures?
No, we don't have that spec sheet here, but we'll get, I'll get it for you. The doorway, is that what you said?
The blade in front of... How big is the...
The wall is 10 feet tall. Is that, were you talking about the concrete wall?
I'm looking at that snowplow blade there. Do you know how big that is?
Well, the height of that concrete wall is 10 feet.
Oh, that's 10 feet?
That's 10 feet.
Okay.
It's about 30 feet.
All right. Thank you. But could you send us that?
And then, the next thing I want to talk about, we looked at location options. This is a follow-up to some of the locations that we presented earlier. When we did the presentation two years ago, we provided some, we looked at the former site, the compost site. We also considered the 2424 Oakton, which has since been developed. We looked at North Shore Towing previously. And then, we also looked at an additional site this time, which was the junkyard lot. And those are, those were sites that we dismissed either due to accessibility, environmental considerations, and also the fact that the owners of those properties were not interested in selling or leasing the property. So, but at that time, council asked us to really take a hard look around Evanston and see. So, what we did without consideration of kind of where the locations, where we looked at, okay, this is how much space we need, this is the footprint, where can it fit? So, we went around, and we came up with these options. And that's the Ryan Field parking lot, the former compost site, and open space at Ashland and Noyes, and the open space that's just north of District 65 headquarters off of Church The first location is the Ryan Field Stadium parking lot, and I want to remind everybody that we have not had any conversations with the owners of the property. We really wanted to get council's opinion and direction on where they would like us to pursue further discussion or evaluation of locations. So, this is a location that's at Ashland and Isabella. Right now, it's used as overflow parking. It's somewhat unimproved, but it's used as overflow football parking for Northwestern. The next location is the former compost site at James Park. And we stopped composting about three years ago as well, and so that is city property. Right now, it is used as a transfer station, and is permitted as a transfer station for our leaf hauling operation. So, that facility is one of consideration as well. We looked at the open space at Ashland and Noyes, which is just adjacent to Green Bay And the final location that we looked at was just north of District 65 headquarters. The sites three and four are sites that the staff is recommending as sites that we see as, all four sites are viable, but we feel that three and four are more viable than the others. And the reason why is the, A, because they're centrally located, B, they're not that far from our existing operation at 2020 Asbury. So, it would be easy to move equipment and people between the two locations. The access to the primary route would be evident. There would be easy to access Green Bay from this location and from Church Street, and then also McCormick Boulevard to get to the north side of town very easily, and the south side as well.
Alderman Holmes has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Robinson, you said that you had not talked to any of the property owners. In the inquiry, have any of the neighbors or residents in any of those areas been talked to? Would that be a part of your second phase?
Yes, ma'am. Once a location or several locations, if council directed us to look at, explore one or more additional locations, that would be a part of that. I also wanted to point out that Figure Three and Four are properties that are owned by the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. And in Figure Three, we actually have a lease for the property that the salt dome would sit on. We use that as a construction, a storage yard, storage facility. So, you know, that would be an amendment to the city lease that we would have to discuss with MWRD. And then, the other site adjacent to District 65 is also, would require some discussion with MWRD. And I just want to go back and talk briefly about...
Excuse me. Alderman Fisk has a question, too. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Suzette. I'm a little concerned about, or I'd like information about, our current salt dome is made out of concrete, poured concrete, is that correct? And what is the floor in the salt dome? Is that also a concrete slab?
Yes.
Okay. What is the likelihood that there are going to be ecological consequences of salt leaching into the soil where it's so close to the sanitary canal and going out to Lake Michigan? Is there any concern? Have you looked into that at all?
No, we have not looked into that, but we would look into that as a part of the environmental considerations of every site in terms of, but we would have to have the containment of the wall, sorry, I'm going the wrong way. The containment and the, the containment and the treatment of the floor is designed to not be permeable. But, and we would hope it would be dry so that we wouldn't have the leaching problem that we have in our existing facility.
And have you talked to Wilmette and Winnetka? What do they do for salt? Where do they store their salt?
They both have their own salt domes, salt facilities. They're both are a good distance away from, even though Wilmette is like very close to Evanston, their public works facility is clear on the other side of Wilmette, near Lake Street. It's closer to Lake Street on the other side of I-94, so it's not really that close to us, and Winnetka is considered ways away as well.
Because I think who we might partner with is going to be a big consideration of where our dome is located. But if there's not, if there's not going to be partners to the north, then that's...
Well, and I think that they're not interested in partnering for salt, but like I said, for the salt brine and the other deicing, liquid deicing capability, we may be able to get more cities interested in that. We already do some pre-wetting of Skokie salt, so they already come over here, and then they give us salt in exchange for the pre-wetting of their rock salt.
But did I hear you correctly that we are sending trucks to Winnetka?
Yes, we send, we send a couple of smaller trucks to Winnetka for liquid.
Okay.
Alderman Rainey.
Thank you. Could we go back over, did you say that 20265 and Northwestern use 1,000 tons? Is that what you said?
Between the three of them.
That's right.
Yes.
All right. So, our tonnage, our storage capacity now is 2,500, is that correct? All right. So, I would say we have partners. And I would say that those three entities, is there anybody else?
No.
No. Those three entities are our partners. And it would, and I realize you're going to tell me that if they weren't our partners, the price of our salt would be more because they are, right now, they are, they're a third of our capacity, right, of our purchase? I mean, we're probably purchasing, no?
No, no, we purchase about 7,000 tons a year.
All right. So, they're a total, okay. But the storage capacity is 2,500?
Yes.
So, okay. So, we're going to go to 4,500, whatever. I think we have partners in those three entities. What about Lincolnwood? What are they doing?
They have their own.
They have a dome?
Yes. Well, dome, barn, you know, just...
Okay. Would they be interested in storing salt with us?
I have not talked to Lincolnwood.
We need to talk to them. But... But next, I want, I want to talk just briefly about another location that I have talked to you about, and I was very surprised that it wasn't in here. The location is not in the city of Evanston, but it is immediately adjacent to the city of Evanston, and it is water district property also. And when you go into the westernmost driveway of the Jewel parking lot on Howard Street, there is an enormous, probably one of the largest private parking lots in the city of Evanston, that is completely and totally unused, except on occasion, I know I've, I've talked to people about our snowplows practicing there, our fire department sets fires in there and practices. I mean, it's a wonderful space. My point is, it is unused. It is in Skokie. It is, I understand that, it's in Skokie, but it's not Skokie property, it's the, the water district's property. And I know you say you haven't talked to the water district yet about this. I know there's, there's an issue with Vineyard, but Vineyard's not using that, and they, it's on their lease. And I would think if we can get permission from the water district and make some kind of an agreement, I, I don't see how we can reject it. You're saying that Evanston is under eight square miles, so the distance really isn't the key factor here. Nobody would see it most probab- probably. People don't even know what I'm talking about sometimes when I talk about this area. So, I mean, why isn't it included as a potential? We're thinking outside the box here.
We, we did actually look at that in, in response to, to your request. If you go shopping at Jewel's, you can barely get out of the parking lot yourself. The, the traffic on Howard Street is very, very congested. Even though it's a primary route, our salt trucks would be, be hung up in that, that parking lot area and never make it out. That, that was one of the considerations. And I'm going to ask Sat if you could come, because I, I don't know if he actually talked to the, to Vineyard at all. So, but, but we did, we did do some preliminary looking at that location.
Well, you looked at it and decided that there was too much traffic. But I, I think that it should be considered. And I think there are ways to enhance the ability to access it and exit.
Okay. We'll do it, we'll do it.
And I don't think the ground's going to collapse like it would if we put it over at James Park. I mean, that's, that's a no. I, I was interested in seeing you say that, because of course, we had an economic development opportunity that was having difficulty putting a grocery store there.
So finally, the last piece I wanted to go over is the, the cost estimate. The, the cost estimates that were presented to you were all based on the Gamble style salt dome. And I gave you a packet that contains the, like an itemized listing of what that cost is comprised of. And it's not just the construction of the dome, there's additional storage capability, there's the, the salt brine and blending equipment operation. There is also the, the site prep work, which is often not included in the, the quote of the dome. And sometimes there are cities that don't really take into consideration the environmental factors that Alderman Fisk alluded to, and they'll just take bare space and, because the, the salt dome structures themselves are, really it's like a building in a box. You know, they kind of come give you the plans and you plop it down on the, the site that you prepare. What we proposed are proper site preparations in advance of constructing a dome on top of it. The other thing that I also added in your packet is the dome style cost estimate, which is the first one on, on the top that you see there. If we were to select that option, that would not give us any additional storage capability, it would just be the salt dome as a standalone.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're hoping from, to get some direction from us this evening after three years of waiting?
Yes. Particularly on the style, if you could, and then-
Neither. Neither style. Is there another style?
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I, I think probably what is most important to us this evening is location. As has been indicated, we have not done any specific due diligence respecting the council's role to provide some direction on location. So we would appreciate getting some feedback on location. I think as far as the structure goes, I think financially, we probably need to keep both in play for now. And I think as we are able to focus further on a specific location, I think we could then come back to you with some additional cost estimates. So if the council's comfortable, I think on that second point, we would, my preference would be that we kind of put the, that aside, leave both styles in play for now, and really tonight, just to hopefully get some comments from you on location.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're looking at a map of McCormick and Howard, aerial view, satellite. I have technical questions, if you don't mind, Director Robinson. Overhead liquid de-icing, why is that an advantage to have, and what does overhead mean?
Oh, it, that's a, a sprayer system that is installed in the top of the, the salt dome that actually sprays the, the load. Once the salt is loaded on the truck, and it allows the liquid chemicals to kind of flow down into, into the salt so that, and that, the, the pre-wetted salt, it reduces the amount of scatter. If you think about, you know, when it's really cold outside, and that's when we, we use the Geomelt, which is the beet juice mixture. It's designed to work in, allow the salt to work in colder temperatures, but when salt hits the ground and it's really cold out, it just bounces, and it kind of bounces off the road, and it bounces as the tires go by. So pre-wetting actually allows the, the salt to stick to the ground when it, when it falls. So it really makes it a lot more effective.
How old is Skokie Salt Dome? Where do they build it?
It is off of Gross Point and just south of Church Street on Gross Point Road. And it's back there in their public works facility.
So it's on-site at the public works? They didn't, they didn't feel the need to, though, to add the overhead liquid de-icing capability or the salt brine?
No, they did not do that.
Do they come to us for that?
No, they, they buy, they, they come to us for the Geomelt, and they buy, they bought the salt brine last year through a distributor.
And what style is there? Is it a dome?
It's a dome, yes. And then they also do outside open storage under tarp. So that's their additional capacity, because they have the land to-
Alderman Grover, are you finished?
I am, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Winn?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would say that of the two designs, I know we're not deciding this now, the Gamble roof, I think is definitely better, considering that the locations that we're looking at are incredibly visible. If we could hide it, and if it were less expensive, I would go with the dome. I, I don't think, I, you know, I'll, I'm going to throw cold water on this, but I don't like any of the locations in particular because of the visual impact that they're going to have on the community. And I, I do think that Alderman Rainey's suggestion is worth pursuing a little bit more. If we, you know, I, I don't see why we can't control the light there better at times during a snowstorm. I think we could probably do better on controlling the traffic lights down on Howard Street anyway, considering the traffic flow that's down there. So-
Talk to Chicago about that, but yes.
Well, okay, all right. Perhaps we should. But I, I mean, I think that this, the size of this structure is very large, and the fact that none of us know where any of the surrounding communities have their salt domes, I think is indicative of the fact that most communities tuck them away someplace, fairly invisible. And all of these locations are very, very visible. And I can imagine how quickly this place is going to fill up when the community members in these locations find out about the size of the structures that are going to be right across the street from them. So I, I recognize how difficult it is to place something like this in our community, but I, I think that we should probably keep looking if possible, and perhaps keep talking to some of these owners of property that aren't interested in selling to us. But can I ask another question about James Park, just so I understand it? The issue there is that all of James Park is on a former landfill, and so the additional cost to placing it on the former yard waste recycling site is the, that is on landfill, and so we'd have to put sink piles underneath it at a cost of an additional million dollars? Is that what I read correctly?
That was the estimate that we got from the structural engineer. We did soil samples in the area, because although there are, the dump site, it's not really known exactly which parts of the park actually physically set on the dump, which is why we did the soil bearings. And all throughout the Compost site, it's smack in the middle, so-
Of the, of the former dump site?
Yes, yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Thank you.
I'm, I'm basically just going to agree with, with Alderman Winn's comments.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you. Suzette, you said that the current salt dome is, what, 12 years old?
Oh.
20 years old?
Over 20 years old.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misheard that. What's the estimated life for the new salt dome?
Well, by our standards, well, we will construct it for at least 20 years, but it could, it could stand a lot longer than that. It really depends on the, the types of material that are selected to use in the construction. So, we would not build a, a concrete dome again. That, that actually shortened the life of the dome, so.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is, is the construction of a new salt dome something that requires Illinois EPA approval or are there regulations that apply to a facility such as this?
Only in the, the site prep piece would, would be important for us to, to, to take a look at that as it relates to, you know, the, the placement of, when we do our site prep, we would be doing some environmental analysis to make sure that the soils that we're removing and displacing, that they were not contaminated. And that was a, a larger issue in some of the sites that we dismissed, like North Shore Towing. We really felt like we were going to have to do at least a Phase One environmental assessment of those areas. But we don't have to do that for, for other locations where we know that, that we're able to show that it's not in contamination in the past.
So the EPA is implicated really for site remediation before you install a salt dome, but not as to the ongoing operation of a salt facility or the keeping, the distribution of salt chemicals and-
It's not a permitted site. The salt, salt domes are not permitted.
Not a permitted requirement.
Yes.
And, and is staff recommending that we really just have one storage facility for salt, that we not tarp our salt supplies, that we not, you really want it all under one roof?
Well, because we use our, our salt on a regular basis. I think that, you know, the, the tarping, first of all, we'd have to find a location. We'd be looking for, you know, the same type of, of scenario to find a place to put it. The tarping only works for, for access, and then what happens is they actually empty out their dome, and they take what's actually on the tarp area and they push it in the dome. So it's still, yes.
And how many deliveries of salt do we get in a season?
Oh, wow.
For the 7,000 tons that we use?
It, it could be at least seven. We try, we usually order 1,000 tons at a time, and sometimes it's 500. It just depends on how much snow we get. We try to start the season with a, a full dome, as much as possible, and then work our way through from there. We order 7,000 tons, but for the last three years, we've used between 8,000 and 10,000 because of the, the weather has just been, you know, horrendous for us.
And they come in loads of 1,000 tons?
No, 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 no.
How many, how many, how many deliveries of, of the salt do we get there?
Oh, they're, they're, the, the trucks, they come in semis. So it's usually about 15 to 20 tons on a truck.
So do those trucks have trouble maneuvering in our existing facility to, to deliver to the salt dome?
No, because, well, they, they have, they can only go in one way and go out the other way. So, you know, it's, and, and when they're in operation and they're coming, a lot of times, we try to have them come at night when we're, you know, we have a night shift that's here. So we take a lot of our deliveries at night, and then they just loop through the facility that way, so they're not impacting. But it becomes quite an issue when the garbage trucks are out there and the employees are moving around, having the, the semis roaming through.
Now, I've had the tour of the salt dome a couple of years ago, I think it was. If anyone else were interested, could they come take a look?
Yes.
Do we have salt in it now?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm curious, and this is sort of a long shot, but have, have we considered moving anything out of Fleet Services that doesn't necessarily have to be there, could be parked or put somewhere else, that the salt dome could remain there, and something more attractive or less intrusive could be put somewhere else in our community?
No, we have not. But the, the salt dome location is impacted by the roof, the parking garage, the, the actual, if you go back to the service center location that you have, the map location, that's actually the parking deck for, for the employees on top of the, of the garage. You know, it's not Fleet Services, it's actually a part of the administration. It kind of leads to the administration building itself. And we tried, like I said, we tried to manipulate and kind of maneuver around in, in that same site, but we have fuel pumps, we're restricted in terms of, of where we can move because of the location of the fuel pump islands, the location of the, the parking deck. So we're kind of stuck.
There's a lot of infrastructure there.
Yes, yes.
Is, just a curiosity, the, the Gamble roof, the, the more traditional barn style, does that enable multiple loading of trucks, or is that?
That, that is set up as a, it's kind of a, it's a drive-through type. You come in one end and you go out the other end.
I see, I see.
So, so, yes, in theory, and then as they leave out, they can, they would be sprayed with liquid de-icing as they left out of the facility.
And one, one last thing, if, I, I like the idea of putting it somewhere along the canal, I guess, and using McCormick Boulevard, is that, is there a lot of wear and tear on a major street where all these trucks are coming in finally and coming out?
I guess no more than it is when we ride up and down the streets plowing them. I mean, it's the same-
Who owns McCormick Boulevard? Is that a state route?
Yes. Well, we own the part of McCormick that's in Evanston, yes.
We do.
And, and the rest of it belongs to the state.
So, did-
From, from Gulf Row, basically, into, to Green Bay is the, the city of Evanston's jurisdiction. From Gulf or Emerson up to Green Bay, that portion of McCormick is, is yes.
Right, right. But I'm thinking the lower part would be, is that scope here, is that?
The other part is, that's the state.
It's, I mean, basically, we'd be using somebody else's roads. I mean, sort of, if it was something that tore them up, it wouldn't be our own roads. I mean, it seems like a, it seems like a good, it just seems like a good, really quick route to, to disperse something throughout the city. I don't, I don't think it matters, I don't think it needs to be a central location.
Yeah, and, and it's what we use that, we use that-
Anyway.
For, for our garbage trucks. When the garbage trucks leave the south of Evanston, they go down McCormick Boulevard. It's, it's, it's a heavily used route. And it does provide access when we're hauling leaves. That's the same way. We're hauling from the north, the north of Evanston, we're going down McCormick Boulevard to James Park. So it's the, that's the quickest route for us to get from north to south.
Alderman Rainey?
Could you tell us a little bit more about the North Shore Towing site? I thought they were always looking for new space.
They, they were. When we did this review two and a half years ago, they were actually, actually interested in leasing the property, and they have since changed their mind, and they're not. We did have some concerns, even though they were interested in leasing with the contamination of the site. And they weren't really interested in cleaning it up, they were just interested- They were just interested in leasing it to us. So, but we approached them and they are no longer interested.
So that site is not under consideration anyway?
No, no.
Because it's not available?
That's correct.
Alderman Burris?
It's actually just responding to something Alderman Wynn said. The Winnetka Salt Dome is right out in the open. It's near the Winnetka Golf Club and the hockey rink. So it's not hidden. It's really part of a larger park system. I think you asked about Winnetka as well, right? Or did you ask about Willmet?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyway, so it is right out in the open next to the hockey rink and the golf course.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you again. It's inescapable that this public works business is just not pretty, whether it's a salt dome or a waste transfer facility or whatever. And I think I'm agreeing with Alderman Wynn and by inference then Alderman Wilson that the four sites that the staff has proposed just make this salt dome so central to our view and our vision. And I think I like Alderman Rainey's suggestion of this site. If we could explore that further, I think that has good potential.
No homes.
Right, with zero residential impact and we can resolve the traffic issues. I think that's the direction I'd like to go.
Go do it. Alderman Tandem?
Sort of picking up where Alderman Burris suggested that there's a large area between the Pooch Park and the, what is used as a soccer field. I know they were transposed at one time. And I don't, I don't have a good estimate, you know, just visually seeing it, how big a space that is or how you'd access it. But it's, there is a soccer field at one end, and then the Pooch Park is really adjacent to the North Shore Towing and the junkyard. But I'm wondering if that's enough space or if there'd be a way of accessing it. I mean, this doesn't sound, if it's a new facility, it doesn't sound like it could be, would have to be all that unattractive. And across from there, there's a shopping center, but that's quite a distance.
Oh, you're talking, oh, okay, across from Sam's Club, that, right?
Right, it's still the water, it's still the water reclamation again.
Yeah, and that's the park facility for Skokie, too. That's a Skokie Park facility.
Oh, it is.
Yes. Those are Skokie soccer fields, so. But, you know, partnership, you know, I don't know.
Alderman Grover?
And confirm for me, if you would, Director Robinson, that really our only potential for a joint development is not with our neighboring municipalities, but rather with our educational institutions, as Alderman Rainey suggested, that either they don't need to share an assault dome with us, or they already, they already have them, they've just built them, they don't?
With the exception of Lincolnwood, and I'm going to follow up and confirm with them what their needs are, I see us having the potential of partnering on the, perhaps the liquid de-icing piece with several municipalities and with our school systems as far as the salt dome itself.
What do you say, partnering on liquid de-icing and the salt, Brian? You mean making money?
Well, either, well, either we would sell it or we would talk to them about, you know, participating in the construction in exchange for use.
Yes.
So, one of the two.
Director Robinson, I have one question. Have you talked to our landscape architects about landscaping this salt dome and making it a little less obtrusive?
No, we have not gotten that far yet. But we would consider that as a part of, I think we did put in the budget for fencing and for landscaping, but we have not talked to them about the specifics in terms of what that would look like. We would address that during the design phase once we identified a location.
Well, that might make the current locations a little more acceptable to people if this huge building was softened a bit by landscaping. Because if you look at Evanston's locations, given eight square miles, they're all pretty much close to residential areas. So that's my only suggestion. Alderman Burris?
And I apologize if I've missed this in some of the correspondence, but have we asked District 202 or 65 to partake, participate in the cost of this? I know they're buying the salt from us, but have we asked them to?
No, no, we only asked Northwestern.
Okay, are we going to ask them?
Yes.
Okay.
Alderman Holmes?
Again, I want to just, come from the? From the perspective of residents, I don't know about anybody else, but I had lots of emails today about the discussion tonight. And I think that, you know, we really do need to think about, think about that in terms of where this location is going to be. I especially am concerned about my own ward because we have so much already. And two of the locations are, well, one of the loca, well, the current location is in our ward. The Simpson, the Ashland and Noyes location, of course, would be in our ward. And then the church in McDaniel is right across. So, and that is such an open space there. I just, I can't, I can't even visualize that because of the number of kids that walk to Walker or bet to Rose and then also the King Lab. And the amount of traffic there in the mornings and things is really something. So, anyway, I just want us to keep that in mind, that we get some input from residents before we get too far ahead so that we don't have to end up having lots and lots of meetings to discuss that.
Thank you. Well, I see no further lights, and I don't think we've solved it for you at all.
Well, can we eliminate without, you said all four?
All right.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think what I'm hearing the council say is that first and foremost, that we should scrub the list that we have, even with the two that we came in this evening as acceptable sites, that we would go back, review the site that Alderman Rainey has raised. I also, I think, hear from the council that if this was located outside of the city of Evanston, that perhaps is an option, and perhaps we need to look at parcels that are available outside of the corporate limits of the city that might work. So we will do that as well. So I think our, we will not undertake any outreach, community outreach, until we get a site or two that you feel is acceptable. So our next step would be to look further for sites within Evanston and perhaps also within other surrounding communities, and then come back to you with additional sites. And then once the council is comfortable with a site or two, at that point, then we would go through a community process, also come back to you, look at structural issues, design issues, screening issues. So our hope would be that we would come back in the next month or six weeks with an additional report.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the next item is a report on one of the council's goals, and that is the goal of community safety. This is a report, if you recall, we hit on a couple different times over the last few months. And with the council's determination to have this third Monday meeting be a combination of reports and presentations, we thought this evening would be an appropriate time. Clearly, the men and women of the Evanston Police Department have been very engaged in a whole variety of different activities over the last several weeks. So we want to give you the presentation that we've been planning and giving for the past couple of months, but I've asked you, Vettington, also to focus on the events of the last few weeks and also looking forward to the summer. The Evanston Police Department traditionally has what's known as a summer plan. As you all are aware, I authorized that that summer plan be activated this past week rather than waiting till its traditional start time of the Memorial Day weekend. So in addition to the report that Chief Vettington was planning, he is going to talk about the summer plan and efforts that we are making to ensure that the Evanston community is safe in the coming months with increased activity with the summer. Chief Vettington?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Your Honor, Clerk Green, Alderman. First of all, I'm very pleased to be here tonight as the spokesman for the men and women of the Evanston Police Department. I think they are collectively proud of their accomplishments, and I want to highlight some of those for you this evening. And I'll start that as soon as I get the projector turned on, so, thank you. As you can see, before you were the city council goals for the city of Evanston. The last two, safety issues and youth engagement, are the ones that the police department focuses most of its efforts on. Also, I'd like to point out that the topics that I don't cover this evening can usually be found in our annual report. This is the annual, I'm sorry, this is the annual report for 2010. And as a tradition in the department, the officers, named Officer of the Year badges are displayed on the cover. These three badges are those of Officer Noble, Officer Rust, and Officer Jones for their work in the 1900 block of Jackson. I'd like to break down our, my comments tonight regarding safety issues into three overall categories. First, traffic, crime suppression, and order maintenance. Like to talk mostly about traffic to start. The goal of the council, as understood by me and the members of my command staff, was we wanted to make Evanston a safer, more walkable city. To that end, Sergeant Moore and his traffic unit have focused their efforts on cell phone citations, pedestrian crossing violations, and school zone citations. These directly impact on how safe it is to navigate in the city of Evanston, whether you're in another car or walking about. And I think that these efforts highlight the department's willingness to apply its resources to obtain those goals. We have worked diligently with the legal department and also our administrative adjudication judges to make sure that these citations are given the attention that they merit. This next chart is, looks really better when you're close, and if you see that on the website, it contains a lot of information. I'd like to point out this chart at the bottom for the trend lines for seatbelt usage. First of all, that green line at the top represents the city of Evanston. And by focusing our efforts on seatbelt enforcement, we are substantially ahead of the Cook County usage rates and the city of Chicago usage rates. And that is based on consistent efforts by members of the traffic unit to enforce those laws and in conjunction with the enforcement, appearances at high school, driver's ed, and other locations where we can encourage that seatbelt usage. This is our crime statistics. Once again, this, oops, sorry. This tiny number here in the bottom is our down number for the year-to-date. It's 4.3 percent, and this is followed on by down years of double digits in 210 and 209. I appreciate that these are numbers prepared by the criminal justice system and defined federally. And I know they don't tell the entire story of crime in the city of Evanston, but they are a good bellwether indicator to the focus of the police department on reducing those numbers. In our efforts to reduce those numbers, we utilize a deployment strategy. If you look at the background of the gentleman appointed to be the new superintendent of the Chicago Police Department, his background closely mirrors the rise of this compstat process in nationwide. He ran it for Chief Bratton, and I tease quite often in front of these groups that Chief Bratton has an eight-hour lecture, he explains how you do this. The Rich Eddington version is cops on dots, and it costs way less, so. But the point is, weekly, the police department command staff reviews the crime pattern from the prior week and makes decisions on where we put personnel. Those personnel are our most expensive and valuable resources, and to get those officers where we need them to be is a function of those deployment meetings. And frankly, deployment is our version for the compstat word that's used nationwide. One of the goals in this is that we are attempting to reduce incidence of crime and disorder based on past patterns and also the prevention of future incidents and addressing those patterns of incidents before they become entrenched in the neighborhood. And by that early recognition of those trends, we can do that. And once again, this has been done in large part by the allocation of resources by the city council to the police department. Part of this plan was the tactical unit that was reformed three years ago. Those officers are the deployable manpower that we can make rapid decisions on and apply to these crime patterns in short order. And so it is a rational use of those resources that has helped in driving down those crime rates. This map I want to talk just briefly about, this is a shots fired map or man with a gun that map for 2011 year-to-date. Those large red dots you see are significant incidents that fall into these categories. And as I realize when we talk this evening and at other times, we are concerned with the escalation of violence, and I think this is a reflection of that. In the chart that you can't see on the side over here, and I will email this presentation to the entire council later this evening, but that shows a decline in these incidents over, since 2008. In 2008, there were 247 calls of this nature. 2009, there were 207. In 2010, there were 180, and year-to-date, there have been 43. And so once again, I think it is part of the successful deployment strategy to drive that number down. Unfortunately, there's something else that I have to point out about this map in the context of what we're currently experiencing. Most of these dots that the police department responds to, we go and we might find some shell casings, we might find damaged property from impacts of bullets, but we won't find participants. Unfortunately, I think this is a indicator of the continuing conflicts that many, not many, that some young people have defaulted to a resolution of conflict via the use of firearms. And this fuels those continued conflicts in that inevitably, when we do have a shooting or we do have an incident, we, as we interview the participants, it's, this is the third event that we're involved in. There were shots that go in this way, there were shots going that way at some later time. The third event, someone's finally hit, the police are involved, but it has been that stair-step escalation represented by this map that has caused the continued conflict between young people. Let me back up for just a second. I want to take out, I want to, at this time, talk about our summer plan. And once again, this is an effort traditionally undertaken in the city of Evanston to address summertime issues of crime and disorder. Traditionally, it runs Memorial Day through Labor Day. Usually, the shift runs 8:00 PM to 4:00 AM, and that's an eight-hour tour of duty. Last year, in 2010, we staffed 107 shifts for a cost of $47,000. This year, we anticipate staffing 128 shifts at a cost of $57,000. That is, 84 shifts are funded from city funds and 44 shifts are funded from grant monies received by the department primarily to the Cook County Judicial Assistance Grant. We folk, in this timeframe, we will focus on hotspots and attempt to direct that officer on overtime to those locations citywide that merit additional attention. And those decisions are made in the weekly deployment meeting. Additionally, as part of the summer plan, the problem-solving team's hours rotate from primarily a 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM shift into a 4:00 to 12:00 shift so we can beef up the manpower during our peak service call time. And so we have added those five officers from problem-solving into the mix. We ask that they handle their community contacts and their community meetings early in their shift, and so they be, so they can become part of the manpower deployment plan in the evening. In addition to the problem-solving team, we coordinate the work of our outreach workers, foot patrol, and our youth detectives. It is important that the experienced detectives in the youth division and the foot patrol members introduce our outreach workers to the kids they know and the locations where kids hang out. kids hang out. And once again, our use of the outreach workers is, if we can have those outreach workers get to the kids that aren't involved in activities and track them in to an activity either in our park district or the Ridgefield Park District, it prevents a further antisocial behavior throughout the course of the evening. If I can talk for a moment more on youth issues, in addition to the outreach workers, we outreach in several other ways, through school, through the schools, churches, and Y O U. And if I can talk briefly about those efforts, and once again, these are the culmination of efforts over time. The ordinance is passed by the city council regarding curfew and truancy. I'll take curfew first. It has had a marked impact on youth crime and youth victimization in the city of Evanston. When I arrived here a little over four years ago, downtown wildings were a part of every weekend duty report. The city council assessed that, decided to make our curfew match the city of Chicago, and what it did is it lapped an hour off the end of the evening. And so we've subtracted not only the youth that were offenders, but the youth that were victim, being victimized in the downtown area. And once again, it is our consistent enforcement of that ordinance that has reduced those incidents in the downtown area. And, and so, once again, those collaborative efforts reap positive rewards. The same thing will be true of the truancy ordinance. The police department worked diligently and attended many meetings at Human Services and worked diligently with the school districts for that ordinance to come to pass with a focus on helping rather than issuing citations. And I think that will reap benefits in the future as, as we're able to focus citywide resources, both the cities, the schools, and organizations like Y O U on those chronically truant kids, to get them back into the system, to provide the educational opportunity to make them productive adults. I want to talk briefly about the proactive things we do that often occur under the radar and unnoticed. This is a memorandum up the chain of command from Officer Ron Blumenberg, the problem-solving officer in the downtown area. If you recall last, the weekend before last weekend duty report, there was the arrest of approximately 12 kids at one time in the downtown area for a curfew violation. That curfew violation stemmed from an outdoor cafe at Taco Bell. Once again, the tables were out, the kids were there, just continued to hang around during the course of the evening. Officer Blumenberg talked to the management of Taco Bell and said, "You know, this is creating a problem, how can we work this out?" Taco Bell has agreed that they'll remove those tables at sunset so not to provide this attractive nuisance for our younger patrons of downtown that will eventually lead to most likely curfew arrests when they overstay the timeline. And it's these type of proactive measures that we're committed to undertaking because we would prefer not to have to make curfew arrests. If we can take away that attractive nuisance that holds kids in the downtown too long, we're accomplishing our goal by making the downtown more usable, and at the same time, not alienating youth and their parents over this type of activity. I want to also talk about the youth division just for a second, and their initiation of a mentoring program. The detective members of the youth divisions and the SROs are volunteering their time for an after-school mentoring program. This is a critical period of time where many things can go wrong in young people's lives if they're unsupervised, and the members of that unit have stepped up to volunteer their personal time to be available to kids to mentor after school. And, and I think that is extremely positive, and I want to congratulate Commander Aretha Hartley and the members of her command for, for taking that step. Another outreach that we do is, we participated with the Noble, the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, and Garrett Seminary in a gang outreach effort to educate the clergy on the ins and outs of gang violence. And this is a long tradition that we have, and as a matter of fact, Chief Logan was one of the founding members of Noble nationally. Many members of the command staff under his tutelage have continued that tradition. We were part of the presenters at this program as we reached out to the community, to the faith community, to see if we can be helpful in dissuading the gang lifestyle. The city manager mentioned the start of the early summer program, which we call Beat 88. And once again, I wanted to highlight this as our ability to pivot quickly and address a problem. The city manager gave the approval. The shifts were staffed through the end of May within the next day. And, and one thing that I do want to highlight in this discussion is not only our ability to quickly implement changes in decisions that are made, but there's a price tag to these endeavors. This piece of paper represents about $8,500 in, in police manpower. What we have here is a letter from the Department of Justice, and I wanted to take a few moments and highlight our efforts with our federal partners. One of the things that the, our federal partners in ATF and FBI bring to the city is a unique toolbox and money, two things that we greatly enjoy. Within that toolbox is their ability to use Title III overhears and wiretaps. For local law enforcement in Illinois, that's virtually impossible. The feds do that like we do search warrants. Consequently, that has allowed us to focus on upper echelon drug and gun traffickers that do their business here in the city of Evanston. I think that within the next several weeks, you will see results from those efforts. Also, on this particular piece of paper, I'd like you to direct your attention to that line, and once again, I do promise to send you this whole presentation later this evening. That's $15,000 additionally that the federal government has committed to their efforts in Evanston, and that's based in large part on the efforts of Deputy Chief Kamanski, Commander Wozni, and Commander Hutton, who have commanded the NET and CAC units to establish that professional relationships with the ATF and the FBI, and that displayed competence and commitment has led to more resources being put into the city of Evanston by our federal partners. And once again, that $15,000 will offset our costs for undercover operations and extended surveillance. The last thing I want to mention in this endeavor is Her Honor's upcoming Safe Summer Summit. This is a critical effort, and she is looking for your input and assistance, as is the police department. To be perfectly frank, we're very good at solving crimes. We're not too good at fixing community problems. We need community commitment to do that. Her Honor has spent a great deal of time orchestrating and engineering the summit, and a commitment of problem-solving team time has also gone into it, but we are looking towards the community for their energy to make this a reality and make the programs and efforts outlined by Her Honor successful over the course of the summer. That concludes my remarks, and I would be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief. I also want to thank you for your efforts in the downtown. As you know, I sent you off a series of emails expressing concern about what had been going on in the downtown. And I would like to know from you, what, what happens when you make, when you take, when a young person violates curfew? What, physically, what happens at that point?
They go to the station, and we call their parents or guardian, and then they're assigned a, a date at administrative adjudication to come here to this room to explain to one of our administrative judges why they were out after curfew.
Okay. And, and they come with their parents, or?
That usually works out best.
Parents are always notified?
Yes. From our end, the parents are always notified. Whether or not they come to the administrative hearing is another thing, but once, once they are in our custody, we need to give them to a parent, a guardian, or a responsible adult as defined by one of their parents or guardians.
If a parent, guardian, or responsible adult is not available that evening, what happens to the child?
We engage in a rather expensive babysitting service.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor. And once again, I would like to express my appreciation for the resources committed by the city council, not only to the summer plan, but other endeavors by the police department, and is our intent to continue to show you a return on investment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lastly, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I would like to give you an update on our continuing work on the budget for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2012. And if someone could hand me the clicker, I'll go ahead and do this myself.
Is this the clicker?
Thank you for your assistance with the clicker. Budget is a team effort. The city would like to talk a little bit about the work that we've done over the last couple of weeks with our Engage Evanston process, and then to continue a discussion that had begun on March 22nd regarding our priority-based budgeting process, the value matrix that we have developed. I'd also like to go through a list of service changes that I have compiled, which I presented to the council this evening for your consideration, and then talk a little bit about next steps as we move forward through the next several months. Again, a reminder of the orders of magnitude that we are looking to bridge a gap in the general fund, looking at a $1.4 million projected operating deficit for the year beginning January 1, 2012, an additional $3.2 million the year later. As I had proposed to the council in March, we are moving forward with a goal of shifting $2 million of existing operating costs from the operating budget to capital improvements in order to begin to lessen the amount that we are issuing for general obligation debt. So that would take the deficit number up for 2012 to 3.4 million, and for 2013, we continue that to 5.2 million. We engaged over the first week of May in the Engage Evanston process. We had city staff members scattered around the community at places that people go to separate and apart from participating in the city government. We felt it was very important in order to get feedback that we needed to go to where residents are, so we were at grocery stores, community centers, farmer's market, soliciting input. We advertised widely in the community to have people call 311, which they did, for people to send letters, and I received about a half a dozen handwritten notes from Evanston residents in the mail with ideas. We received many comments on the city's website, we received emails, we received people talking to us at the various locations. So I think we did a good effort in getting out information and really having an opportunity to listen to Evanston residents with their ideas. The specific ideas that we received were about 175, and those ideas, which you have a complete list of in your packet this evening, were one area that I used in order to come up with a list of, of ideas that I'll be sharing with you in a few moments. And as again, as the slide indicates, that they were incorporated into the service change proposals. As I talked to you on March 22nd, we're proposing to do a priority-based budgeting exercise to take all of the municipal services that we provide as a city and to evaluate them based on community priorities. And also, in your packet this evening, is a breakdown of the program elements that we would be putting toward this priority-based budgeting exercise. When looking at the priorities of the community, as we had shared with you again back in March, we thought that taking the three main areas of the strategic plan made the most sense as a starting point for that matrix. And to remind you of those areas, one is economic viability, the second is environmental sustainability, and the third is strengthening community. And the strategic plan has separate goals underneath, underneath each of those major topic headings. Another component part to this that I had recommended to you back in March, in addition to those three strategic goals, was also to look at the city council's goals, and would propose as part of this evaluation matrix to have a value assigned for each of our programs if they support the implementation of the city council's goals. So with that, we struggled with what was missing. We felt that the three areas in the strategic plan didn't really encompass what we felt the council's primary goals were, and while we also were including the, the city council goals as an element, we struggled for the last couple of weeks with what we would do to, to round that out, and at one point, thought about taking the categories of municipal services that we provide, that we list in our comprehensive annual financial report, which added five or six areas, but still, that didn't seem to make sense. So what I'm proposing this evening is that in addition to the three areas that we, we have from the community strategic plan and the city council's goals, that we would add a fifth area that would be a safe community, so that we would apply a measure to this matrix of all of our city services based on five areas. Strengthening community, economic viability, environmental sustainability, how the city program moves forward the city council's goals, and then how that program also then provides for a safe community. So with this value matrix, we would then compare that to each of the services, and again, you have a detailed list in your packet this evening. This gives you an overview citywide of all of the various programs that we would then put adjacent to this value matrix. And as we were doing this with the inventory of city programs and services, we planned over the next few months to develop documents on each and every one of those, of those programs. And we would have a document that would include a description of the service, the number of staff providing the service, the financial information of both revenues and expenditures. If that service is mandated by anyone, federal, state, local government, the changes in the demand for that service, have there been an increase in the community for a demand in that service? Are there alternate service providers in the community that could provide the service in addition to the city? And then are there opportunities for innovation in providing that program? This gives you a sample of what that review would look like. We picked one particular service, animal control, really only for illustrative reasons here, so the, the information that you're seeing is not the information that would ultimately be evaluated, but it shows there's a service description, it shows the number of staff providing the service, it shows changes in demand for service, alternate service providers, opportunities for innovation, and then financial information about that particular service. We would then apply a scoring mechanism from zero to four in two areas for the basic program attributes, and then the priority results as they match with the, with the council goals, including the strategic plan goals. And again, my proposal to add a, a fifth component, how the program allows us to provide a safe community. Again, this is just illustrative of how you would, would take a particular program and apply it to each of those results. So that is one component part of what we're proposing to do is between now and your meeting at the beginning of August, to go through each of the city services that we provide you with the list, put a review of them, you know, provide us consistent information about each service, and then provide a numeric score based on the matrix that we just showed you. So that is the first portion of what we're proposing to do over the next few months. The second portion of what we're proposing is to fully evaluate a list of service changes. And this service change list, again, comes from a variety of different sources. It comes from the exercise that we've just completed regarding Engage Evanston. It involves information that we had previously gathered from the community over the last two budget processes. It includes information that we gathered from our employees, it includes information that the mayor's budget task force, which reported out last spring, and we've kind of taken all that together, and, and I'll take ownership of this list and put this list together as a group of areas that we would look at over the next and put this list together as a group of areas that we would look at over the next several months and come back to you at the beginning of August with plans for each of these service changes. We would see how relevant they are, how much they could save, and then package up that information for consideration in a second round of community discussions, and then ultimately have that information come back as the elements to make up the proposed fiscal year 2012 budget. So I'd like to walk through each of these proposed service change ideas and get the Council's feedback if there's anything you'd like to add or subtract as we move forward. In the category of citywide programs to look at opportunities for service changes, the first area is our youth services programs, and this deals with at-risk youth and youth employment. We've done a good job, I think, of consolidating these services largely in our Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department over the last 18 months or so. But I think it is clear that additional work can be done there to make sure that we are leveraging appropriate resources in this area for maximum benefit in the community. The next two, ensure proper employee classifications for work done, and then look at the salary and benefit model for all classifications, really speaks to our costs to provide services for employee costs. And again, there are multiple component parts to this, I think, and we need to look and make sure that the employee classifications that we have for work that are being done are appropriate. And if there are adjustments that need to be made to those classifications to better reflect the current work that's being done, that is an exercise that would be very valuable. The area of salary and benefits, we need to look at our costs, our employment costs citywide. The services we provide, I think, are very important, but the costs of the employees that provide those services are something that need to be evaluated. We are moving forward with collective bargaining over the next several months, and this would be a key element going into those discussions.
Alderman Rainey has a question.
And that's exactly what I was going to ask you about. How, let's say we determine that changes needed to be made and that there were people in classifications that were earning, you know, 20%, 25% more than the same job in other communities. How do you deal with the unions on those kinds of issues?
Alderman Rainey, members of the Council.
And one other piece to my question, I'm sorry, Womack. But can you drop down an employee who's doing the same job in the same way that you've determined requires a lower classification? Or would it apply only to incoming new employees?
Let me answer the last part first, and I'd ask Mrs. Daley, Mrs. Earl, to come to the microphone because she could help answer this question. It would apply to current incumbents. So I think that we would need to look at employees that are currently performing those duties. Maybe Mrs. Earl can speak to the specific question of the reclassification process and what is involved with collective bargaining, what is not involved in collective bargaining.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council, Clerk Green. To respond to your question, Alderman Rainey, if we were going to look at compensation of employees, we would be required to negotiate over the impact. Wages is a mandatory subject of bargaining. So in this particular instance, if we were going to look at classifications of jobs, we would look at the classifications, we would determine what they should be, and then we would have discussions with the union over the impact.
But then with, Mrs. Earl, could you speak to then individual classifications? I mean, individual incumbents in a particular classification, how that is handled with the individual employee?
With the individual employee, depending on if they're union or non-union. In a non-union situation, we've redlined employees. We've told those employees that their job classification has changed, the value is less, and there would be a period of time where that would phase out. And actually, this July, for example, we do have some people that is having compensation that is reduced. For union employees, we would, again, talk to the employees, inform them of what was occurring after it was negotiated, and when it would be implemented, and when they would be affected. Does that answer your question?
Next, dealing with enforcement of laws. Again, I think we heard a little bit of this from our residents, from our employees, also from the Mayor's Budget Task Force, looking and evaluating all of our fees and charges for all services. Some that came out in particular, sidewalk encroachment permits, impact fees, false alarm fees, vehicle stickers, all of those things to be looked at, as well as the enforcement of code offenses. Are we enforcing all the code offenses that we have on the books? And are we then also collecting the appropriate revenues for the enforcement of those offenses? The next area is the shared use of programs and services. I think that there are opportunities for us to reach out to natural partners around the larger community to see if we can share programs and services. Can we provide existing services to those entities? Can those existing entities provide services to us? Or are there new partnerships that we could create? I've listed most of the likely groups, the two that are not on here that we would also be looking at are District 65 and District 202, but Northwestern University, Evanston Hospital, St. Francis Hospital, and then the three incorporated communities immediately adjacent to us, Skokie, Willmet, and Lincolnwood. I've not included the City of Chicago. I think it makes sense first and foremost to look at those three communities, and I think perhaps over time, opportunities may be there to talk with the City of Chicago. Special events, we put on a variety of special events throughout the year. Many of them managed through the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services. Is this a business we need to be in? Can others manage our special events for us in a way that would free up existing city resources? Next, alcohol sales at city facilities. By and large, either it is prohibited or heavily restricted for the sales of alcohol at city facilities, this is buildings, parks, anything that the, any property that the city owns. Are there opportunities for some flexibility there that will allow for additional revenues to the city? Next, increased collections to money is owed to the city, fines, taxes, property damage. We've recently brought on a new collection agency that is doing, I think, good work, but are there opportunities to focus on collecting money owed to the city? And the final area of citywide concern, use of volunteers. We've put, I think, in place a great infrastructure for the use of volunteers. However, I still do not believe we are using enough volunteers for city operations. So this would be to look at a strategic way to use more volunteers in city operations. Next, we'll break down by operating departments. Next, the City Manager's Office, Ministry of Services and Law. The first area there, public and government cable television access programming. As the Council will recall, two years ago, would be a fairly substantial reduction in the support provided to the Evanston Community Media Center. I believe that the time has come for us to completely reevaluate that relationship. And for the $300,000 that we provide them annually, perhaps that money could be spent elsewhere. Next, the cost of citywide cellphone use. As the Council recalls, we were fairly aggressive a year ago in reducing our costs for cellphone use. Since that time, we have certainly been surpassed by other jurisdictions around the country, eliminating the employee-supported, excuse me, city-supported employee cellphones. And I think it would be useful for us to look at making additional reductions there. The area of parking enforcement and parking fees, I believe, needs a complete and thorough investigation to see that not only the revenues that we are bringing in in the area of parking enforcement, but also what we can do to reduce our costs associated with parking enforcement. Crossing Guard program, I want to make it clear to the City Council and the community that I believe crossing guards are an important part of community safety, and I am not proposing that we eliminate our crossing guard program. However, with that said, I believe there are ways that we can provide the service with less cost to the City of Evanston. Accounting, purchasing, and payroll. This is an internal service that we provide with city forces along with a technology that has been purchased by the city. I think that we are at a critical juncture with our own circumstance with accounting, purchasing, and payroll, and that we have a computer program, computer software, that has reached the end of its useful life. It is no longer being actively supported and does not do the things that we needed to do. We are facing a large purchase of a new software package in order to move forward to continue to provide accounting, purchasing, and payroll services. I think we need to look at the opportunity to contract in that service if we're moving forward with that new software. Or if we're not able to do that, look at contracting out that service.
Alderman Burris has a question.
Actually, it's more of a comment. You were talking about volunteer, and then you went to crossing guard program. I mentioned this last year about crossing guards being parents, volunteers, working more closely with District 65 to look at that. You know, I know when I was growing up that it was older students that were crossing guards, and our parents were out there, our schoolteachers were out there. I don't know when that shift happened that we're now paying crossing guards. That seems like that is a great way for parents to know what's going on in the community, for teachers to know, for the older students to have responsibility, even if it's high school students that are maybe doing it as a community service for the younger students. So I think that's something really to look at as we move forward. I agree, we need the crossing guards 100%, but there are other ways to do this and to keep people involved. Thanks.
The next area is information technology. We have made substantial reductions in our city staff associated with providing that service. However, we still have a fairly good-sized staff that does that. Again, I think there are opportunities to look at other jurisdictions to see if we can contract in services. If we are not able to do that, to look at additional contracting out opportunities. And then finally, in the area of City Manager's Office, Ministry of Services and Law, to look in a comprehensive way at all properties within the City of Evanston and they're currently exempted from property taxes. This is coming directly from the Mayor's Budget Task Force. We do not have a comprehensive database of all of those properties and their current use. I believe it is appropriate, given the large numbers of properties in the City of Evanston that are exempt from property tax, that we ensure on a regular basis that those properties and their current use still qualify for that exemption. And if those properties do not qualify for that exemption, that we take appropriate steps to have them subject to property taxes.
Alderman Rainey has a question.
Thank you for that, Mr. City Manager. In addition, I don't know when your staff is ever going to have time to do anything else but this work in organizing this whole effort. But I would like to know the role we play when an agent for a property applies for property tax exemption. Could you, I don't understand the process. Could you share with us our role in that?
Sure. Mr. Lyons is nodding his head in the negative. And if we don't have staff here tonight, we can provide that information.
Yeah, I would really like it in writing.
Certainly. We'll provide that information. Next is the Department of Community and Economic Development, three areas there. One is the rethinking and reevaluating our minority women in Evanston-owned business program. For many, many years, that program was separate and apart from our community and economic development efforts we have over the last 18 months or so. Combine that into our economic development program. I think the question for me is, what is the best way to meet the Council's goals in this area in the most affordable way possible? So I would like to look at that. Next is the area of affordable housing and emergency housing assistance programs. Again, this is another area where we had employees working in various departments come together about 18 months ago to focus on these efforts. And I think there are opportunities for evaluating the costs associated with those programs and the services that are delivered. And finally, in the area of community and economic development, our use of TIF districts and economic development funds.
Alderman Rainey has a question.
Mr. City Manager, under the affordable housing, emergency housing, et cetera, et cetera, we have a series of fees and taxes, et cetera, having to do with development and the transfer of fines and taxes and fees into affordable housing. Could we have an outline of those and maybe some commentary from the Community and Economic Development Manager or Director as to how those fees and taxes could conceivably be affecting development?
Certainly. We can, we'll take that as another request to get you information.
And also the status of our demolition tax on housing. That would be part of it.
Certainly.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's another emergency assistance program that's administered by Evanston Township. Could we also look into see whether or not the City of Evanston would be an appropriate agency to administer that program?
Certainly. All right, that concludes Community and Economic Development. Next is the Police Department. Public safety in this community is extraordinarily important. I think because the Evanston Police Department is as generally effective as they are, they have not been a portion of these budget discussions. And I am not proposing that we look at any specific service changes in the Police Department. However, Chief Eddington and his staff have been very good about looking at department-wide efficiencies in the past and would ask them that they would continue to do that, and whatever appropriate packages of changes that would make sense, we would bring forward to you in August. The same thing with the Evanston Fire Department. At this point, I do not believe it's appropriate to pursue any fundamental changes to the services we provide in the Fire Department. However, as Chief Kleiber has already been willing to do, to continue to look at department-wide efficiencies there. The area of the Evanston Health Department, this is a difficult area because we are one of only a handful of communities in the state of Illinois that use general fund revenues to support a health department. I think, given where we are with our finances, that we need to look at our provision of community health initiatives. Basically, the department is broken into two areas: environmental health and community health. Environmental health deals with largely the public safety aspects of health. Our community health initiatives deal with healthy communities. This would not impact our work in trying to locate a federally qualified health center here, which would be a nonprofit, third-party area, Family Health Systems is the identified partner. So any changes would not affect our efforts to bring them here to Evanston. But there are other costs associated with our community health initiatives, which I believe we need to look at. The library, we've not talked a lot about the Evanston Public Library in the past several months, but it remains a city department. The Council has indicated that it would like the Library Board to take a greater role in the budget operations of the library. However, the library still is purposed to the City Manager, and I believe we need to look at additional department-wide efficiencies with the library as we are looking with all city departments. The area of public works, a long list here. City vehicle fleet program, street maintenance, refuse recycling, yard waste, street sweeping, city alley maintenance improvements, and engineering and street light services. City alley maintenance improvement programs, again, this came out of the Engage Evanston process where folks suggested that we look at our existing programs with alley maintenance and the 50/50 program, which I think makes sense for us to look and see if there are better ways for us to do that. These remaining areas employ a lot of city staff, and the impacts of looking at contracting in or contracting out or looking for additional efficiencies is a very difficult one. And we need to tread cautiously here. We need to make sure that savings, that we could identify our real savings in order to move forward. Finally, in the area of refuse recycling, yard waste, and street sweeping, I think that there are additional efforts there, looking at that program. What makes the most sense? What are we doing to encourage recycling? What are we doing to best manage yard waste? What is the real value of street sweeping? And what can we do citywide that makes sense in all of these areas? Again, looking at efficiencies with existing resources, looking at contracting in to other, from other jurisdictions. looking at contracting in to other, from other jurisdictions, and also looking at contracting out.
Alderman Win?
Yes, I'd like to understand better that if we're looking at contracting out professional services, how we would analyze that, what the analysis would be in terms of contracting out professional services, the type of comparisons that we would be making in that regard.
Alderman Win, members of the council. What we would need to look at are probably a couple different distinct factors. First of all, I think we would need to ascertain, again, what are our costs in providing those services, look at benchmarks for other jurisdictions and see if we are close, if we are, you know, far one way or another. It is an initial temperature to take. And then at that point, I think we need to look and see what can we do to make our existing operations more efficient. I think contracting out needs to be the final piece of that puzzle. So I think we need to look at efficiencies. We need to look at what opportunities there may be to contract in from other jurisdictions. If we do decide to move forward with contracting out, we need to measure apples to apples. And that's an overused trite phrase, I realize. But we need to be able to measure what the cost of providing a particular service that we're currently providing is versus a third party. But it doesn't stop there. Then there are intangibles. And I had an hour and a half conversation with the most of our field staff, our street maintenance, park maintenance, forestry staff this morning. And they were very right to make a point that there are the intangibles. There are the things that are done in addition to the apples to apples, the work that is not quantified in their job description on a day-to-day basis. Who does that work? And if that work doesn't happen, what happens from a quality of life standpoint? And then the other element to contracting out, what we do in the wintertime with snow, is that our employees, our field employees who have a variety of different tasks during the other three seasons of the year, everyone comes together when we need to deal with snow. And what would we do if you lose those employees, staff members, that model for snow removal is no longer effective? So what do we do in that instance? What does contracting out, what impact does it have to our snow removal model? And how do we deal with that? So there are multiple components to that. You know, you cannot only do one or two pieces. You have to do the whole thing. So it is a very elaborate process in order to do it properly. But again, if we are not able to contract in services, if we're not able to find sufficient economies, then if we do look at the contracting out, those are the elements we would look at.
Okay. Thank you.
Parks Recreation and Community Services. I believe we need to look at every recreation program we provide to see if it makes sense for us to continue to provide it. Looking at the costs associated with it, looking at the revenues, looking at the overhead costs associated with registration. A very small number of our residents use online registration. There are likely various factors associated with that, but the costs associated with registration are high. Our costs of advertisement, the magazine that we do is very labor intensive to prepare. We have cut back on the number of those that we do a year. But those all add to overhead costs associated with recreation. I don't believe we need to be everything to everyone, especially when there are other nonprofits, other ways people can get that same, those same kind of programs. So it would need to be a very extensive look at what we're doing with all our recreation programs. As I mentioned with some of the Public Works operations, forestry and park maintenance, the same issues apply there. Looking first at contracting in, then looking at how we can do things more efficiently. And then if we're looking at contracting out, are we looking at pieces? Are we looking at all those operations? So that would need to be looked at. In addition to services, I believe there are facilities that we need to look at and see if there are ways to provide the services of certain facilities that we have in a better way. The Noyce Cultural Arts Center, the Lighthouse Landing Facilities, both have significant capital needs, which I don't see a way for the City of Evanston to pay for in a timely way, anytime in the near future. So are there ways for us to continue to have the services provided at the Noyce Cultural Arts Center provided by someone else? As you all know, the Noyce Cultural Arts Center is a collection of individuals as well as resident companies. Since the discussion on March 22nd, those groups have come together and have met and have talked about options. And they, at least groups of them, have approached both Mayor Tisdale and I about the opportunity to purchase the Noyce Cultural Arts Center from the City of Evanston. So I believe that it's important for us to continue those discussions to see if there could be a purchase from the resident companies to have the facility and operate it on their own. The Lighthouse Landing Facilities, the main building at the Lighthouse Landing area, which is currently occupied by the Evanston Arts Center, also is looking at a significant amount of capital needs. The Evanston Arts Center, under our current long-term lease with them, has responsibility for the maintenance of the inside of that facility. We, the City of Evanston, have our responsibility for the outside of that facility. The Evanston Arts Center is interested in vacating that building and either consolidating their operations at the Noyce Cultural Arts Center or someplace else in the community. So would encourage that we have those additional conversations to see if there are other tenants that would make sense for the Lighthouse Landing Facilities.
Alderman Grover has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bob Quitz, in evaluating or determining the real cost of providing some of these services, will we look at not only the number of personnel, the number of employees in forestry, for example, but the administrative overhead costs associated with those services? It will be a complete look at what the costs are as well as...
That is our intention. I think we have done that citywide in a very uneven way. So we are going to do our level best to have it be consistent throughout all departments. But yes, that's our intention.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Manager, what's our current lease at the art center?
It is, of course, sitting on my desk pursuant to a question that you asked earlier in the week regarding the ownership and how we became owners of the building. I can get you that information. Mr. Dieter will be kind enough to remind me of that when we're done.
And the leases with the tenants at Noyce, are they three-year leases? Am I remembering correctly?
They are annual with opportunities for renewal.
Alderman Fisk, I believe there are two components to the art center lease. One is a very low, could be a dollar a year lease, but the other is that they're required to spend, and I may misremember this, but something like $35,000 a year on upkeep.
Have they been doing that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I think the challenge is we have not been upholding our end of the bargain. The Lighthouse Landing Facilities were provided to the City of Evanston by the federal government in the 1930s. At Alderman Fisk's request, we're carefully looking at those documents to understand what flexibility we have based on those grants from the federal government. Next is the Ecology Center. Again, I do not believe that it makes sense for the Ecology Center to stop operating. I think that the work that is done there is extremely important to the fabric of the City of Evanston. However, I believe there are alternate ways that that could be provided. And I believe we need to continue looking at ways to look at alternate forms for the Ecology Center operation. The Chandler Newburger Community Center, if you look at our collection of community centers around Evanston Art Centers, the Ecology Center, I think that the Chandler Newburger Community Center is the one that has the least connected mission with the community. Given its location near both the L and the Metra, I think there are higher, greater uses for that facility. And I would like to have the opportunity to explore them over the course of the next several months to see what opportunities there may be for other uses of that facility. And finally, there's keen interest in the community of renting space out in this building. And when we look at space, we have largely filled the space that is here, with the exception of space on the ground level, which we have kept in abeyance for the federally qualified health center. However, I do believe that we could better use the space that we have to create additional space for rental. And so I would like the opportunity to spend some time over the next few months seeing what we could do in order to free up additional space for rental here at the Civic Center.
Alderman Burris?
Regarding the space, the committee rooms on this floor, could I just, understanding of what happens to those during the day? If we could have a sort of a schedule, because most of the time when I'm here during the day, they're completely empty. And even at night, they're empty for a large portion of it. And I know for parking and transportation, even though Alderman Win runs an awesome meeting, not that many people show up for that meeting. So it's, we're in this large space that we're just not using and we're heating. So I think we could probably reduce committee rooms. I think, thanks.
Lastly, our Utilities Department, again, would look at an evaluation for department-wide efficiencies. There has been some work done a couple of years ago comparing our water and sewer operations to other jurisdictions. And by the measures done in those studies, we were well within any measure of efficiency there, certainly compared to the City of Chicago, other area water departments. However, a key element here in addition to that is water sales to other communities. As the council is aware, we currently sell water to the Village of Skokie and then a consortium of four communities known as the Northwest Water Commission, which includes Arlington Heights, Palatine, Buffalo Grove and Wheeling. I have spent the better part of the last year working with the Northwest Water Commission as a group, as well as individual communities that make up the commission, to encourage them to begin thinking about ways to buy more water from us and to partner with other communities. I believe we're starting to see some fruit from those discussions. And I will keep the council posted to that. We have given them a variety of models in order to partner. If they're not willing to partner, then I think that there are options for the city to move forward to sell water to communities in the area without the Northwest Water Commission.
Alderman Tendem?
Thank you. Just a quick thought with regard to water sales. Has the recent reaction to our fire, has it been publicized? I mean, it seems to me we could actually get a lot of very positive publicity from the fact that we reacted quickly, did not stop water service and all that kind of stuff. It shows that we are serious about the water production and do it well.
We have not widely publicized the events of yesterday for no real particular reason. I think in my discussions with the village managers in really all the communities that we could serve, and there are probably six to eight additional communities plus an additional consortium in far western Cook County, they all would like to do business with us. I think the challenge is in the connections, is in the contracts that they all have with the City of Chicago. No two of those contracts are alike. And so I think we have to work through the technical side as well as the legal contractual side. But there are absolutely solutions that will allow the City of Evanston to sell water at a rate that's much more inexpensive and manageable than the City of Chicago currently sells water to those other communities.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, I would just caution you, Alderman Tendem, because depending on the source of the problem, if the problem was the vault and not our causing the vault a problem, we could inadvertently be pointing out what many people know, and that is the inadequacy of the distribution system. And we wouldn't want people to, you know, reject us because of that. May I ask a question about revenue? This is, has nothing to do with water, but before, I think we're probably at the end of this list here. There was just a $12 million sale to the Bank of America of Dempster Dodge Shopping Center. I pray that sale was subject to transfer tax.
The lawyer sitting next to me indicates that it was not subject to transfer tax because it was a foreclosure sale.
Okay. If that being the case, I think as we talk to our state reps and to other legislators, that we ought to begin looking at that issue. Because, you know, the Bank of America can certainly afford to purchase that, and they did. And what is the legislation exactly that excludes a foreclosure sale? So all the, all the sales that go on, all the properties that are foreclosed in Evanston, the purchase of those properties is not subject to real estate transfer tax. Is that correct?
Alderman Wilson?
I guess if I could just kind of share the philosophy, I think, that was behind the original legislation. The idea here is that when a bank lends money for the purchase of the property, the bank has already put out the money. So they gave the purchaser the money. The money went to the seller of the property. So the bank is already out of pocket for the entire amount that they made the loan for. When they go through with the foreclosure, they're simply, if there's no other bidder and they bid at the sale, they're bidding against the debt. So they're not really actually putting any money into the transaction. They're simply attempting to recoup the money that they've already lent for the purchase of the property. So I think that's the underlying philosophy there.
So if you purchased the property for $12 million at auction, would that purchase have been subject to the transfer tax?
I don't think that that would. But if I turned around and sold it to someone else, of course, then it would be. So the share of sales, there are not...
But if you didn't, I mean, then you would have a property free of real estate transfer stamp requirement. Could I get our legal department's full-blown commentary on the various forms of foreclosure purchases, auctions, NSP-2, et cetera, et cetera?
As they pertain to the transfer tax?
Yeah.
Certainly.
And, I mean, several properties I've pointed out to Brunshore, I've been told that are foreclosed on, that are vacant, were, and I feared this to begin with, have been purchased by others before we got there. So I'd really like to know about those. There's a lot of properties we're missing.
And our city attorney appears.
Oh, cool.
Members of the council, Alderman Rainey, Clerk Green. Yes, Alderman Rainey, you do raise a very good issue. And consistent with some of the requests you've made in the recent week, we're trying to put together a comprehensive overview on the transfer tax issues, the property tax issues that you raised, because you touch upon a number of important points that I think the Law Department will now work to get some clarity and get a report to all members of the council so we can hopefully address some of those questions.
Alderman Holmes?
I was going to comment. If you remember, Alderman Rainey, I believe Assessor Wilson came and reported to us that she had worked with our staff to help reduce the property taxes for some of the properties within NSP-2. So evidently, they had to pay some transfer taxes. So I, you know, I'm not really, I don't remember the whole conversation, but I do remember her coming and reporting that, so.
Well, and I support reducing property taxes where we can on foreclosed properties because they're going to be most likely turned over to low and moderate income people who need the advantage of lesser tax. But I'm really talking about the transfer tax. So I don't know if she meant that also.
Oh, okay. I'm, I don't know. I remember her saying something.
No, no, she did, because it created a little bit of a controversy.
Yes, it did. So maybe we need to check that out.
I do remember that.
Probably the Economic Development Committee, I mean, Community Development Department may have some information on that as well.
Almost done, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We'd come back, we'd come to you in March with this idea of going out to the community and getting, doing an exercise of breaking down how the community would spend $100 based on the areas that we plan to do the assessment of each of our services. We really can't agree if this is a worthwhile exercise or not internally. I think it might be interesting and instructive, but again, we would have to do it largely online. And I think there's always a concern that that's only a subset of our community. So I think unless the council feels strongly about it, we'll probably pass on this part of what we described back in March. But we will, as a last component of this, come up with some documents for your review in August, comparing five Illinois communities and five communities outside of Illinois, really a broad overview of... really a broad overview of the various services they provide, their costs for providing services for all of our municipal departments. And we'll have that for you as part of the package in August. So before I go through the upcoming schedule for the remainder of the budget process, there's one element I've not touched on, and that's the State of Illinois.
Alderman Rainey.
Before you get into that depressing subject, could you tell us what we're doing to solicit advice and counsel from our employees as to ideas they have and proposals they might have for saving money and efficiencies and...
Alderman Rainey, members of the council. We did a fairly extensive outreach to our employees about 14, 15 months ago. And so from that document, which was, I don't know, 20 odd pages long, Mrs. Earl, some of the ideas that we have not implemented have been mixed in with the group that we've already done. I've committed to our employees through a series of emails regarding the current process that we would let them know how they could be involved in the discussions on each of these 38 or 39 areas that we're going to be focusing on. I've, I've, I promised that I would provide them a list, which we'll do tomorrow, of the responsible staff member going through all of this. I've been meeting with employees. I've done, I think I'm nearing the end of meeting with all the employees in small groups. I've been doing a series of brown bags. This morning was sort of a brown bag breakfast in talking with employees, and I got an hour and a half's worth of thoughts and ideas from our field staff there. We'll continue with those brown bags over the course, actually, of the remainder of this week and next week. So that will continue, and we'll start a new process with that in August, once this information is available as we walk through toward October when the proposed budget is released.
Well, you know what they're thinking. And the 20 pages that we had 15 months ago, I'm not sure are that meaningful today. Maybe they are, some of them. But I would sure like to have some information, how, what they're thinking.
Well, I can tell a little bit about the hour and a half discussion I had with about 40 employees this morning. They're very angry, they're very frustrated, they, they don't understand, they take this all very personally, that there's a reflection of their skills and abilities and not a reflection of the money that we're, you know, the financial stress that we're seeing as a larger community. And it's very difficult. I think that, you know, they want us to work smart, they want to work smart, they want to have the tools to work smart. I think I've heard that uniformly. The group this morning was very animated, but even in the groups that aren't animated, I think they've been very forthright about that. And Alderman Rainey, members of the council, I believe that this is not a one-time deal. There has to be constant dialogue with our employees, constant opportunities for them to provide input. We'll provide structured ways over the next several months as we're working on that. But I'm committed to continue to talk with them one-on-one. Not everyone uses email in the course of their work. Electronic communications only go so far. I believe I need to get out and talk with folks, and have been doing that about twice a year, really trying to touch every one of our employees, regardless of what they do. All right, then, the remaining schedule, before that, Illinois, State of Illinois still has no budget. There remains discussion with the local government distributed fund, which is the vehicle which provides villages and cities with a portion of the state income tax. We have no good information, other than they're probably going to do something to us. And so the question is, what is the order of magnitude of that? Numbers that have been bandied around, starting with Governor Quinn a year ago, could be an impact to us between $1.7 and $2 million a year, above and beyond all the numbers I've already shared with you this evening. We cannot take another $2 million hit and only focus on the strategy I've outlined this evening. If there's an additional $2 million hit, we will have to reduce police and fire services. And so if the state budget over the course of the next couple of weeks contains a hit of that order of magnitude, I will likely be back to you right away to begin talking about options for reductions in police and fire, in addition to continuing to look at the reductions that I've described this evening. So that's another piece of this puzzle. Again, the upcoming schedule, we will work diligently on all that's been discussed this evening. Would ask for the council's any adjustments or changes to what you've heard this evening. Otherwise, we'll move forward and come back to you on August the 8th with a large amount of information. We then would propose to go back out to the community at the end of August and through the month of September to get additional feedback on what we, some specific dollars, the specific impacts of changes to the budget would be. And then to present to you a proposed fiscal year 2012 budget, the first part of October, have the traditional budget hearings, at least traditional, the same sequence that we've done the last couple of years, and hope to have the budget done by Thanksgiving. Thank you for allowing me to take a little bit of extra time this evening to go through the details of all this, and I'm looking for any additional feedback that you have.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Between now and August, when, when more of this rolls out, we have more information, if residents have more suggestions, more ideas, if they want to offer their input to the process or the substance, how would they do that?
Certainly all the ways that we have, we have the items that were on, the web portion of this, we've, we've taken down and we are going to try to reconfigure so that it's a, it's a 12-month-a-year opportunity for people to provide suggestions to it. We're not quite there yet. In addition, telephone, email, letters. I, you know, I was really heartened by the number of handwritten letters I received from Evanston residents in the mail, largely from folks that would, people who are not using email on a regular basis, I would think, but who, who got the message that we really wanted input and that they took the time to write letters in addition to all the other ways we've got. So that, that remains as an option.
And is there a way to let residents know those things that we're already doing that came up on the list of ideas? There were some that are already part of our plan and program.
We can do that through a separate document. Let me give some thought to how we can do that. There were about 175 things of the ones that we didn't cover in one form or another. There was not a large number of things that I would say we were already doing, but we can try to come up with a list and get that out.
Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know that the Central Street Neighbors Association is holding a neighborhood, or actually, it's not a neighborhood, it's an open discussion of the budget next Thursday, May 19th, 7:00 PM. It's at the Three Crowns Campus in the Sixth Ward. And it's a pretty good group to start with, and I'm hoping they can get the word out about this, or I can.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion?
I do. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the City Council convene into executive session to discuss the agenda item regarding real estate. This is an agenda item that is permitted, subject to be, is a permitted subject to be considered in executive session and is an enumerated exception under the Open Meetings Act. This exception is five ILCS 120/2A, C5, C6.
Second. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brathwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.